Thank you, Sheriff. At this time, I'd like to recognize Pastor David Wall from Harmony Baptist Church. Let's have all of the people come forward, please, sir. They just identified you. I appreciate your coming.
Thank you, Leonard. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, Sheriff. Let's pray. For God, all lives, and eternal Father, goodness, thank you, all the Lord. You know, it's not close to us. Our knowledge is so weak, so small, so tiny. You know yourself now, you build yourself in person, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Creator of our lives, sustainer of our lives. You simply turn in our own direction and continue to do it in the name of God, the Lord, and the Savior. All the blessings, blessings, and wisdom, which will love, love, intelligence, and knowledge, and control, and steward. That's how we do our lives, through God. The policy in Scripture, if you're like this, and just ask, and you give us a little. So always ask for wisdom, depending on how, especially with the regulations of government. It's like, yeah, the information, it's that similitude, and all the facts, or the fact that happens in the world, and all the decisions. I'm just missing the night, or the meetings to come about this year, and the years to pray for all the government in Coffee County, Tennessee, and the countrywide, and just thank for the previous week, I rejoice, and crash over the day, and thank you for the presence of this. Now, your honor, and your Lord, does he give us prayer for the life of the nation, for the worship of Jesus Christ, who are around him, and that I would pray should be more than that, for Jesus' sake.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank all before him, this evening. And at this time, I've asked our sheriff if he would give the audience, please, and our commission for prayer, update on the condition, on all the conditions going on in the way.
Full officers are at home as of yesterday. Wendell suffers a severe bite to the hand. He was not shot in the hand. The newspaper, and people announced, he had three tendons, did him too, and broke bone in his hand from the human bite. He also was shot one time under the heart, but his best stopped it, and didn't even break a rib. Wendell received a gunshot wound to the abdomen that passed through his intestines and clipped his only kidney. They were able to repair the kidney, and he come home yesterday, and he's doing exceptionally well. We feel blessed that we're operating two officers. Wendell did not have his waterproof vest on because of a surgery he had had for a hernia operation. If he had, it would probably have been a lot better. That's where we're at.
Thank you, Sheriff, for that update. And thank the audience and our assistant, our county, for all the prayers at this critical time for him. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a real call. I think it was seventeen. Thanks, Teresa. Seventeen present. Do you have your package in front of you? At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion, please.
Motion by Jackie, second by Major Kimbrel. He's first, Major, I'm sorry.
One question.
Yes, Sheriff.
I notice we have in there some appointments on January.
Yes, Sheriff.
It's due July, not normal June. Is that a...
I thought they were to be effective July, and we can play with that.
It says, it says the appointment's four July, but I was wondering, I couldn't remember how we had done an impact, so I was just asking.
I don't mind putting off, well, that's what the commission desired, but I think we thought it's effective July 1, so that's why we're here.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay. Good question. Thank you, Sheriff. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please, on approving the agenda. Thank you. Okay. Do you have the minutes of the previous meeting in front of you? I trust they've been reviewed. At this time, I'll order a motion that the minutes of the previous meeting be approved.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Kennedy, second by Tim Stoffield. It's ended for some sort of discussion. There being none, let's vote, please, to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Okay, move, thanks.
Number seven, resolutions of memorial sympathy and commendation. Number eight, elections appointments and confirmations, eight nodaries.
I'd be glad to make a motion to elect, approve the nodaries, the five nodaries that are on our list.
Thank you, Russ. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Rose Mary. Okay, thank you. Discussion. Yes, Bruce. There being no discussion, let's vote, please, on a motion to approve the numbers.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Seventeen. Seventeen both of the passes, thank you. I have two recommendations, nominees from Law Enforcement Committee that met last week, to approve these two individuals as part-time judicial commissioners, effective for the balance of the year starting in July 1 through December 31, and as you know, in November, the law enforcement will await the recommendations for approval by the commission in January for the next year. So those two names are General, retired General, Army General George Walker and Kevin O'Connell. And Heather and I met with these individuals and vetted them, and I'm really impressed with what I saw from the two of them, really, really impressed with them. And they'll be approved as, or to be approved, or submitted to you for approval as part-time commissioners. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, please.
Motion by Jackie, and second by Dan Ardrays. And do we have any discussion? There being none, let's vote, please, on a motion to approve these two individuals as judicial commissioners, to be effective July 1 through December.
Anyone want to change their vote? Seventeen.
Thank you. Do we run long?
Eight, C, amulets authority.
We have two of the five authority members that are due to be appointed, or of course, two-year term, and representing the whole of the committee, Commissioner Morris, Keddie, and B C D Ford, representing the rural part of County. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve. By Tim Morris, second by Major Shelton. Do we have a discussion? There being none, let's vote, please. I'm running long, I'm at that point, you know, it's not too...
Anyone want to change their vote? Between yous.
Okay, between yous, thank you.
Eight, D, water and wastewater authority.
We have one, a point on that. Mr. Doug, it's terms up, and I would ask him, he expresses that he continues to continue serving on the enforcement side, submit to you the name of Mr. Doug to be appointed for the, to the wastewater authority. Do I have a motion to approve? The approval is by Major, second by Martin. Thank you, Martin. Discussion. There being none, I'll call for a vote.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you.
Eight, E, other, I don't have any. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eight, audit committee report.
Do you have that in your package? I showed you, I read it. Do I have, I'll, do I have a motion to approve the audit committee report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Cunningham, thank you, she served with that commissioner, Doug, second that. Discussion. Now, call for a vote, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you.
T and D, I'm sorry, T and B budget update. This doesn't have to be voted on, so...
That's just included for your question. I appreciate very much. For granted, that's all. I came out of our budget meeting last week, this update, so I appreciate it.
T and C, county employee certified training program.
That also was reviewed extensively, that was a recommendation for our first set of compensation meeting, and that was through review and through last week by opposing plans. And that will give now away for some of our county employees that want to continue their education, so that they can be better on the service, opted to do so, and be compensated a little bit for that, so I said that they can be voted on. And I would, no motion to approve, please. Or all, all except both.
Motion, please.
Motion by, do I have a second? Second by Sam La, thank you. A discussion. There being none, let's vote, please.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Thank you very much for that, and our county board will appreciate it.
T and D, budget amendments.
I have two minor budget amendments. One is the rural capital projects fund. This was a project I thought was going to be completed next fiscal year, but it was done early, so that's amended the budget for that minor item, which we see is $906,390. But even with that, we're still adding to the fund balance of $203,845,000. That was one seventy-one, twenty seventeen, twenty-four. The next one, one-on-one, twenty seventeen, twenty-five, which is just a minor transfer from the trustees commissioned over to the sexual offender registry. These both were approved by budget amendments on June 20.
Actually, these two amendments are being presented to you to vote on tonight, so do I have a motion to approve the two amendments as presented?
I may not approve these two amendments.
Thank you all for your participation. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Martin, thank you. Discussion. There being none, let's vote, please, on the two amendments, both put together.
Anyone want to change their vote? Seventeen.
Thank you.
T and E, resolution two thousand seventeen, twenty-two. A resolution making appropriation for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, agencies of Coffee County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, two thousand seventeen, and ending June 30, two thousand eighteen.
Motion to approve? What was your package for here? Motion by Tim Morris, second by Dan Ardrays. Discussion.
I'd like to make a comment. I noticed in the last budget finance meeting that it was addressed about the cost of living adjustment for employees, particularly the ones that are in the ambulance or the sheriff's office. And I think there was probably some resistance to that there, but having been a county employee for seven years myself, I know that county employees are the bottom leaders of the budget, and there's really no place in the budget process to present this, you know, because it's presented by department, not necessarily for the benefit of the employees. And since it's been ten years since a cost of living adjustment has been addressed, this is exactly what causes our salary for employees to fall off a cliff from time to time, as it has several times since I've been associated with the county, because it gets to a desperation point from way behind the gun, which we are now. We're trying to do it with the police and the, and the ambulance and sheriff's department, you know, which we're giving them a two percent raise a year, which is trying to get that, those departments back up to par, but the rest of the county employees are not even considered, but it's reprehensible to go ten years, make these employees not have a cost of living adjustment along the way. So I would like to make a motion to amend the budget to, because I know Mariana had worked up some figures, I'm making a cost of living for two percent, three percent, five percent. Five percent we make up over the ten, ten years, but that's too much. So I'm making a motion to, to apply three percent cost of living adjustment for one of the county employees who are not in the sheriff's department, or in the ambulance, or involved in the two percent raise a year, which would total $187, close to $180,000. And I would also add to that, that every three years, we address this, so that we don't fall off those cliffs going forward, that there's a process in place to address this, so that we don't get out of whack with our employees' pay going forward. And I appreciate the second from that.
Thank you, Martin. I believe that was actually one twenty-eight.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for that, I'm a correction. Thank you.
Okay, you heard that. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, for discussion, okay. Floor is now open, and we have a motion second. It's now for discussion on the three percent cost of living adjustment for those mentioned in the county courts. Rush.
I'll start off a little bit here. First of all, Ms. Cunningham, I do not consider our county employees, among these, I certainly respect and, and will stand behind any of our county employees, and so I think we cast a negative image and statement by making those kind of statements. B, this cost of living, a couple of issues have certainly puts my position, is cannot vote for that amendment. One, it came up last Tuesday night for the first time, and we were already well, well down the budget process, setting. Something as important as salary adjustments needs to be metted through committees, departments, and it does not need to be coming up at the last minute. And really, the only explanation was, it seems like some of our neighboring municipalities received raises at the last minute, and, and that was the argument, and that kind of argument bothers me, is kind of like, you know, when I was raising my kids, kids come home saying, you know, Johnny, my friend gets this, why can't I get this? You know, I just never had a problem with it that way. But we have a step, we have, we installed a salary schedule with the step raises of three percent every other year for our employees. That step system generally was set up to prevent salary erosion and, and helping with the cost of living. And for the last ten years, if you go back over the CPI, the CPI index has barely been above one percent over the last ten years. So cost of living, if no one ever feels like they're getting hit of it, but our step increases have certainly stayed right with it, I think, over the last ten years. So this, we said it at the committee, we will be certain that this gets brought up early, whether it's January, February, or next year, and looked at, and, and considered in light of, of, of good posted data based on where our employees are in, for other counties and whatever, not just at the last minute, somebody else is doing it, we should do it, kind of motion, so that's my position on it.
What else?
Ms. Mayor, I make one other comment. We, we also had a request from the school system for two percent for their folks as well, and, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, then it, then it needs to be on a broader basis, and I'm just of the view, I'll second what Rush said, he don't do this at the last minute, he did at the beginning of the process, well, twelve ended, the school system, there was a lot of discussion, and there was a lot of looking to see if we could find the funding for that, and quite frankly, we did not find anybody willing to step up and say, we need to have a tax increase in this county to fund it for this coming year, and that's what it will take, even just a little bit, or if it's going to erode our operating revenues, what we need to go into the, to the following year, and really don't want to be doing that anymore than, unless you absolutely have to. We need to build that rainy day fund, we need to have cash reserves, so you can pay salaries and operate this county going forward with money, until the revenues start generating and coming back in. So, you know, we need to be prudent about that, so I'm with Rush. I can't support doing that at this point, but I certainly would ask, second what Rush said, you know, bring this up early in the process, start it even before the budget process for the next year, so that this can be worked through, work through the salary committee first, and then come to the budget, and let us, whoever's on it at that time, step up and try to find a way that we can actually fund.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate those comments, and I understand what you're saying there, but I do understand that, it was my impression that to make this, we probably wouldn't have to do a tax increase, because just a few years, it's not even been a difficult thing to worry about a tax increase, due to y'all's great management of the money, Mariana's great work, but, but it does seem like, if we could just put it in place, to study this more often than just, you know, every ten years, or when somebody, but, and have it in the process, maybe, to, to make it where it's part of the process instead of just with departments, because it hangs out there, and so no one really knows when to present that to that committee, so, you know, just asking going forward, maybe we could consider that.
Just time again, my memory's not the best thing to go on, but I think within the last two years, we added another, what, ten years onto the compensation schedule, so that you can continue on getting that near three percent, because there were several who were capping down, so it was extended to add the three percent every other year for, I think it was another ten-year period.
But the scale raises are a lot different than cost of living adjustment. Is that not right?
I think they were designed to achieve the same purpose, in my mind. But you can give, is... We can, we can adjust the entire, what this does is adjust the entire salary schedule above. That doesn't necessarily...
Well, I know, what I'm saying though, if you look at step rates, you can give cost of living rates and step rates, if we choose to.
If you, if you want to shift the cost schedule right, and you're right in, apply the fact that, I have to remember if they were doing that.
Oh, no, I'm just, if you just give the schedule to the right, it's one that I can do.
Any other discussion? There being none, let's vote on the question, on the amendment, that is to approve the three percent cost of living raise for the mentioned, the mentioned county employees. So we're voting on the amendment.
It's going to end.
Yes. Because there are, we're going to two percent. That's what you stated, so.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Okay. Three yes, so the motion does not exist, okay? Now, it's back to the original motion, to approve the, I'm going to second, to approve the resolution for twenty seventeen, Act Twenty-Two, actually voting on the full budget. So, discussion on that. No discussion on the full budget? Okay, let's vote, please. As I said before, I do thank the budget and finance for the very long process that we threw, the county's hours, and thank Mariana for all the work she did on that as well, and preparation of all the documents and the schedules and all that, but it was a long effort to get this going, so I thank all of you for all the involvement in that, and all our...
Anyone want to change their vote? Seventeen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Mickers, can I make one comment after the fact?
And that is, I would hope, again, for the following years, with budget and finances that go through this, we consider developing a plan to get us out of the process of providing donations to charitable institutions, you know, realize they rely on us, and it may take a few years to step us down to get us out of that process, but I just don't think we ought to be giving taxpayer money to... out of that process, but I just don't think we ought to be giving taxpayer money to charitable, the people themselves should decide what charities they want to support in the county even, that isn't our job as a, as a body in my mind, of which charities to support.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
T and F, Resolution two thousand seventeen, twenty-three, resolution setting the tax levy in Coffey County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand seventeen.
Do I have a motion to approve? Okay, motion by TM, second by, uh, Mr. Rickert, discussion.
And if one of the hundred percent certain, uh, finance directors says this motion, if approved, is not a tax increase to the citizens of our county.
Not a tax increase.
Use your two RPs, second, Mary Ann. Further discussion, go remove your tax levies. Okay, call for the vote, let's vote please. Thank you, Commissioner, do you realize that third of the events you passed made through all the business and passed a budget and a resolution setting the tax levies, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one other comment and that's a thanks from the ambulance authority for providing some general funding that they need to be able to stay in business and operate properly and we do appreciate the actions of this board and the budget and finance team, thank you.
An extra fifty, that hundred thousand for all bases, thank you, again for budget finance for all the work that you've done.
T and G Other, report sustaining committees and budget patterns.
We're not to be meeting next, uh, Tuesday, so, I'll spell that back, uh, next Caleb, go back where I'll break those, maybe on Tuesday, so.
July eighteen. Wait, next week, July eighteen.
The eighteenth, and, um, yeah, we think we're something in New York, the eighteenth. Yes, our next schedule, budget and finance meeting, so, we haven't made out the agenda yet, we just won't be sure, I want to show us on next Tuesday.
Legislative meeting.
The legislative committee did not meet this month.
Capitol Atlantic.
We meet next Thursday and this budget is including the new Atlanta Memorial Library in Springfield, so. Thank you all for that, for that, I know we have representatives of the libraries here tonight and I know they're very appreciative of that and I guarantee you that the business will be open well.
House of Representatives. Personally, our compensation.
We made it, made it, made it, made it.
Law enforcement. Any special committee reports? Number eleven statements and announcements?
I do have one announcement, uh, one of the office budgets, I'm looking at the Tennessee State University, uh, Alumni Association South Central Chapter and, uh, we covered this whole South Central area and we are having planning, night of jazz, what's my theme, Ed and Kate for Night of Jazz, the Hamilton Brothers, Chris and I are local, young men, graduate through, and they, they, they're kind of, and Nashville a lot, uh, in fact, that's where they're all located, so they, uh, they're having a jazz night, which is a fun range, it's, uh, it's called a fifth one, it'll be Friday, August eighteenth, um, at eight P M at the Markham Center Building in Oklahoma, uh, take twenty-five dollars and buy, like, one of the towers.
Anyone else, Commissioner, have an announcement? Okay, uh, number twelve, public comments.
Any comments?
What's the next meeting for West River?
We have one scheduled, yeah, for Water West Water Authority, yeah, we don't have a meeting scheduled.
Other comments? Motion to adjourn. Uh, thank you, Dana, meeting adjourned.